What the schedule is, between nine and nine thirty will be an overview. At nine thirty Parks and Rec will present their budget. At ten o'clock will be the administration budget. At eleven will be public works. Starting at twelve to one will be lunch. And there we'll see if we have to make up time or not. That's scheduled for one hour. At one o'clock we'll be doing the sewer budget. At one thirty the fire department budget. Two thirty the police budget. And at three thirty the library budget. So depending upon how things go, hopefully it'll go smoothly. Your presentations, and I'll go over this just in a few, there'll be presentations, there'll be time for questions and answers after each presentation, okay? First off is I'm gonna start with just kind of a general overview. This is just some statistics that I was able to locate in terms of, you know, our population. We're actually, we're a little over eighteen thousand, we're over eighteen thousand now in two thousand and ten. Believe it or not, the females outnumber the males in Goffstown, whatever that's worth, Thea. The estimated median income in two thousand and eight was seventy-two thousand dollars, and in the year two thousand it was fifty-five. I don't think you can. Oh, you can.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you.
Beautiful. The other point I wanted to make was, as you can see, in New Hampshire the median income is sixty-three thousand seven thirty-one. Also, just, we were able to get some unemployment rates. In the United States it's nine point seven percent. In New Hampshire it's five point five. And in Goffstown it's currently five point one. Now what I did was, and I know this was a little bit, I apologize for this, I'm gonna kinda show you where the points are. And Steve, which one is it? It's this right here?
Yep.
Okay. I apologize for not being able to, I was trying to get this to be a white slide, but I couldn't do that. But the green line, I'm sorry, the blue line here represents our budget. And as you can see, it kind of spiked in the year two thousand eight, two thousand and nine. Couple of reasons for that, because we had the, we put the road program, which was historically a separate article, they put that in the budget, and then we also have some IRA monies in two thousand and nine. The red line is our revenue, and the green line is the amount to be raised by taxation. As you can see, it is a slow and incremental increase. The next is our tax rate, and this is total tax rate, this is not just the town, this is town, school, state school, and the county. And as you can see, the top one obviously is the total. And from two thousand six to two thousand seven relatively flat. We got some increased revenues on the school side, if you remember, and then it went up in two thousand and ten. And the one that, obviously we're here, is the town, and it has been this trend line right here. And as you can see, that the school portion, this has kind of been, you know, with the different federal monies that are coming in, they've gotten a lot more revenues, but that'll be the schools issue to explain that. Now what I did was, I asked our Scott Bartlett to take a look at, what are, to take a look at three properties in Goffstown from nineteen ninety-two to the present, and to look at assessed values, and to look at what did that person actually pay on their tax bill. So we tried to come up with the spectrum, and I'm gonna just jump down quickly to the bottom here. So we have one home that is currently assessed at two hundred and four, another at two thirty-two, and another at two ninety-seven. And as you can see, back in nineteen ninety-two, these three homes, according to Scott, there's been no major renovations to them. They have been kept up, et cetera. And he picked three random houses. If you want me to give you the address, I can, I don't know who they are. And so in nineteen ninety-two, this hundred, this house that is now valued at two oh four six hundred was valued at one hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred, and they paid two thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars in tax. In the year two thousand and ten, which is the current tax bill right now, which is being mailed out, their taxes are going to be forty-six eighty-seven, which represents a sixty-four percent increase over a nineteen-year period of time. We then took a look at this house that was, this is about the average house in Goffstown, two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Back in nineteen ninety-two, it was assessed at a hundred and thirty-one. They paid thirty-one hundred dollars in taxes roughly. Now their tax bill is fifty-three fifteen, or a seventy-one percent increase. And this one I kind of found kind of strange in a way. But this is the house that is valued the highest, and this is a house that is currently assessed at almost three hundred thousand dollars. Back in nineteen ninety-two it was assessed at roughly one hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. Back then they paid forty-five hundred and fifty dollars for taxes. Now their tax bill is sixty-eight fifteen, for an increase of fifty percent. So again, it seemed kind of strange to me that the higher-end home, their tax bill would have gone up, I guess the least of these three different properties, but it is what it is. Now most, and more particularly, if you take a look at, from the year two thousand and five, so one, two, three, four, the last, say, six years, you can kind of get a feel for this particular house, their tax bill went from forty-three thirty-four to forty-six eighty-seven, about three hundred and dollars, three, three fifty dollars. And then here it went up about, about five hundred, four hundred and seventy-five, and here about, say, seven hundred dollars, okay? Over that six-year period of time. So, you know, there's been some speculation that, you know, tax bills are gonna double on our current trending, and that kind of, that really does not play true here. So over a nineteen-year period of time, that'll be almost two decades, they have not even doubled in any of those scenarios. And the reason why is because although the budgets may be doubling, the revenues are, there's corresponding revenues as well. Okay, now I'm just gonna give you.
Scott, excuse me. Was that for a whole year, or is that for?
That's a whole year. Whole year.
Wow. I have to tell you, that's not the way my tax bill was.
Yeah.
Sorry, how to say that.
All right.
Mine neither.
I happen to have mine, and I can show you, mine mirrors that same thing. Now, now here's what we're gonna be kind of doing today, just wanna give you a background of what we've done in the last couple of months. The department heads were asked to present three different budget scenarios to the Board of Selectmen. They had one budget scenario that was based upon their two thousand and eleven needs. They also had another budget scenario, which was set to mirror the two thousand and ten allocations. And then they had another scenario, which was a ten percent reduction in their respective budgets. And then they made these presentations to the Board of Selectmen in the month of October, just wanted to let you know, and those are all on peg-on-demand, and they're in the minutes. Here's what we did as well. We reviewed the CIP recommendations, which were accepted by the planning board. And CIP is a planning tool, it's not really a budget tool, so they look at all of our capital needs, they try to span them out over the course of years, so that we don't get, you know, jammed up in one or two years where we have all these things that have to get replaced or fixed, et cetera. So the planning board does that, then it becomes, it goes to the Board of Selectmen and to you, the budget committee, to determine, let's, you know, can we afford these things that have been slotted in certain years? The Board of Selectmen made the following cuts from CIP prior to operational budget reviews, and I believe this year we did that first. Last year we didn't do CIP until after, but this year we did CIP first. First thing that we did was we reduced the DPW road plan by a million dollars. Now, that was from the budgeted amount, okay? It is a four hundred thousand dollar reduction from the two thousand and ten current level, all right? So that the, so I think we're at like one point five million, we'll cover that, Carl will, and David will do that. The next thing that we did was we deferred, whoop, sorry about that. We deferred four hundred thousand dollar accounting and financial software. Right now, our accounting and financial software is antique, and it does need to get replaced, there's a lot of functionality that we do not have, it is very inefficient for us, we cannot run a lot of different reports. And quite honestly, how do I put it, in layman's terms, it would be like having like a ten or twenty-year-old version of Quicken or something like that, it's just a lot of different functionality out there, and it takes us a lot of manual hours to try to come up with the data that we need to make decisions. And that's not exactly a good thing, but it's also something that we felt was, even though it's a priority, there are a lot of other pressing priorities, so we deferred that. We also deferred forty thousand dollars in land use software. As you, if, in case you were not aware, the cemetery at West Lawn is almost at capacity, and there are, there is an urgency to expand the cemetery. And what you'll see here is that we had a hundred, about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars was in the line to expand West Lawn Cemetery. After discussions with our DPW director, we decided, I'm sorry, I apologize, at one forty-eight, and we reduced it by one thirty-eight five hundred. Our DPW is going to use their crews and their equipment to expand, to do the phase one of the West Lawn Cemetery expansion, which I believe is down to like only double plots, I don't think they even have any single plots left. And I think now that there are people who are, who know that there's only a few plots, are now buying them at a certain clip here. We also deferred a Wertherly Hill drainage project, that was four hundred thousand dollars. So bottom line, and this is where a big, aside from operations, the CIP portion is rather significant, and you'll see that our CIP budget for two thousand and eleven is roughly two point nine million dollars. In the year, last year, it was almost two point five million dollars, but I wanna give you the caveat there that there were three pieces of equipment, which we'll discuss in a second, the garbage, the solid waste vehicle, the ten-wheel dump truck, and the fire truck, fire engine, that were all bonded, that failed a town meeting, those were separate. And in two thousand and nine, our CIP budget was, again, two point nine million dollars. So it's kind of been somewhat level. As I said just a second ago, the CIP increase is due primarily to the need to replace three aging pieces of equipment, and I'm gonna let, we'll talk about that later when DPW does their presentations. That need still exists, so even though we deferred it a year, we have put repairs into these three vehicles, and the department heads and the selectmen for each of those departments will go into that when they go over their budgets. The two thousand and twelve, CIP, what I, hold on. Oh yeah. In future years, the point that I'm trying to make here is that when we keep deferring, we have a lot of other vehicles that are scheduled for replacement in two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen. So as we keep deferring, we're getting more and more and more that needs to get fixed, and we don't wanna be in a position where we were, I think it was in the early nineties, when we had to go and literally bond, I think it was like three or four dump trucks, five, I'm sorry, five dump trucks. It just doesn't make sense. The whole purpose of capital improvements project is to spread it out, to minimize your having to bond or finance things, or try to keep it as stable as you can. Now what else, so we adjusted CIP, and you'll see that reflected in your budget. So now I'm just gonna kind of give you an overview for what you'll see throughout all of the budgets, regardless of the, regardless of the department. Health insurance increases were six and seven percent. It was six percent for our non-bargaining unit members, employees, and seven percent for our union employees, okay? That was good news for us. We had budgeted fifteen percent, and so that was a pleasant surprise for the board. We reviewed the various budget scenarios, and currently the board supports a level-funded budget from two thousand and ten. The Board of Selectmen worked with their department heads to make the needed cuts to achieve this goal. Couple of things that you'll see is that the wage lines reflect a freeze in COLA and STEPS with a proposed warrant article on the ballot. And one important thing is that you will see increases in the wage lines in all of these departments, even though I just made that statement that wage lines are frozen, because you have six months of wages that are still there, okay? So because we start off, we give any increases on July one, two thousand and eleven, or every year on July one, that's when they take effect. So you'll notice that even when you have a proposed warrant article for, say, a union, et cetera, the first year will always be about half as much as the subsequent years, because it's only six months. And what you'll also see is that each department, as we get started now, they will present their respective budgets. Some of them have a short number of PowerPoint slides, I know others have, it's longer, because their departments are bigger. And then they'll be followed by a Q and A. So the only kind of ground rules that we have is that we're gonna try our very, very best to stick to our schedule. And David Pearce said I couldn't get this done in thirty minutes, and I think I'm done.
Oh, wow. Congratulations.
I have a question just before we get started. I'm processing the information, your slides, I assume these are available later, right?
Oh yeah, yeah.
So you asked department heads to prepare some scenarios. Are we gonna see those scenarios reflected in what we're going to see?
You're gonna see our proposed budget, which is a level-funded budget. If you have questions about how, because we did go through those scenarios, whether it be police, fire, library, administration, what would it look like for a ten percent cut, that's certainly part of the Q and A piece, and you can ask us, hey, what are some of the things that was presented that you didn't like, and we can certainly tell you those.
So all departments prepared a ten percent scenario?
They prepared scenario, correct. Every one of them.
And it's not here, but they prepared it?
Yes.
Okay.
Every one. All right, now our first up will be Parks and Recreation, all right? So who's, you're gonna be doing this, Steve?
Yeah, I'm gonna work with Rick on it, if you, could you bring it up on the screen?
Yeah, sure.
Good morning, everyone. I don't know if, oh, I'm sorry. We all, we all set, Kristy?
Yes.
I wasn't trying to figure on this, I didn't know if there was something, you had a question to where you all said, okay. All right, morning, everyone. I don't know if anyone's met Rick, he's our new Parks and Rec director, and we're actually very excited to have him here today. And we're gonna go forward with the Parks and Recreation's budget for this year. Honestly, I'm gonna simplify it real easy. We're gonna look at the total lines here, and you're just gonna see the comparisons from two thousand nine, two thousand and ten, and you're gonna see, on two thousand and eleven, you'll see department head, Board of Selectmen, and what that changes. And you'll notice that historically, and the Parks and Rec budget has been low, and I think everyone knows that over the years, it's one of those budgets that comes in, everyone just rubs his stamps and says, go ahead. So one might say, well, why are we at a five percent increase this year? And this is one of those budgets that, when the board looked at it, and when we looked in, and obviously we're gonna follow through with how the parks look, is that you'll see that our parks are in disrepair. In fact, a mainstay of it is our pools and the buildings that surround those pools. And the board, as well as the Parks and Rec Department, I mean, as, Commission, excuse me, sorry, looked at and said, we're gonna look at how we're gonna protect those assets. In other words, it's one of these things that you just can't bypass on, because it's gonna cost you more as you go down the road. The other thing that came up originally, you'll see the sixty-two thousand dollars, which was in the department head for the CIP item. I don't know if anyone watched Monday's Board of Selectmen meeting, that essentially what we did this year was, we are now taking, not performing a sidewalk in Pinnardville, and we're taking that money, and we're gonna use that to repair the pools, and we're gonna show you some photos of the pools, so you get a better understanding of it. So though our budget went up five percent, you'll see there is nothing in CIP, and, okay? Whoops. And I said, don't touch that button, and that's exactly what I did. All righty, let's see if I can go forward. I'm gonna pull my stick.
Just click the next button.
I can do this. I can't, no. Give me one second, I'm sorry. One button I said, don't touch, and I did it. And it was. Okay. I can't do that. All righty, sorry. All right. Now, the first slide I'm bringing up, and I'm not gonna read through all the programs that we have in the Parks and Rec, but, and I'm gonna steal a line I got from Rick, he says, we offer services from pampers to grampers. I like that. And I want people to understand that with Parks and Rec a little bit, it's that, we, they offer services for every age group, every, from, like I said, from pampers to grampers, and we offer services twenty-four, I mean, twenty, I mean, all the way around, twelve months, twelve months out of the year. And if you look at it, it's just interesting when you look at all the different things that they do do, and it's one of the, one of the things I found interesting was, is when you look at how well it's rounded up, it's something that everyone uses. In fact, twenty-two hundred people will use these programs during the course of the year. And now I'm gonna compound it, one more, one, give you one other number, and when we do the pools, a hundred and fifty people visit the pools each day during the summer for a tally of around ten thousand visits. So if you start looking, a lot of people utilize the service for the parks. And the other part that came up was, well, what exactly do we have for parks? And right now, you'll see, you'll see the list of all the different parks we have. Goffstown's one of those fortunate areas, that if you look at what we have between, we have lakes, we have Glen Lake, we have the Maskey Lake, we have Mountain Pond, we have the mountain for hiking, we have kayaking. Then you look at all the different fields we have in the skateboard parks, it's a busy place. In fact, I'm gonna let Rick chime in on this a little bit. You know, when we say maintaining the parks, I mean, there's a lot more involved than just mowing the lawns, if you can just kind of chime in, Rick.
I mean, some of you folks are all business owners, and you know that you have to maintain a lot of these assets to keep them up to speed. And just those fields alone, each one of those fields at Saret has a full irrigation system on it. So there's a cost for flushing that, starting it up, and actually, the cost of water from Manchester Water Department for those fields. You, to keep those fields up to speed, you gotta fertilize them, you gotta seed them, you gotta, you gotta take care of them, they get a lot of use, you might have to cut out a section of grass, put in some sod. You have to maintain them. If we don't maintain them, then you see the results. So I think there's a lot to it, and as Steve said, all the time, just mowing those fields, and they're used quite a bit by a lot of different people within this community.
And one of the interesting things, and when I was looking, going through the budget with Rick, is that historically in the past, the budget wasn't probably as itemized as Rick, so you're gonna see some differences within the lines. And if I can tell a funny story, at one point earlier this year, there needs to be a porta potty at Glen Lake, and Rick, and I, my understanding is that Sue called up Rick and said, hey, you gotta get a porta john out to Glen Lake, and Rick's question was, well, what line does that come out of? There was no line, there was never anything in the budget for, for the porta johns. So you're gonna see some of the lines change a little bit from the prior year, because we're trying to be more of an itemized list, so you can have a clearer understanding where the money's going, okay? And some of the other things that you'll see, and we'll talk a little bit further down, but I'm just gonna cap on a little bit, they were talking about equipment, and I noticed that on one line, I said, well, what was the increase of that? And they were talking about a leaf blower for when they go out there, and I said, oh, the other one broke? He goes, no. He goes, what's the gentleman's name?
Mike Garrett, our groundskeeper, uses his own, his own personal back, that he's been doing for the past two years.
And what I'm trying to reflect on a little bit by saying that is that historically, we know this has been a very tight budget, and when we're looking, when we go forward and we look at the little things that we're looking to increase upon, to work on, it doesn't revitalize our parks to where we wanna be, it's just a start. And we also, the Commission also knows it's tough economic times, and we're looking forward to the summer to partner with volunteers and businesses to help and assist us in these processes. And so, but there is a lot out there, and there's a lot to get done. Okay, I guess I'm gonna.
Steve, can I just jump in? One thing that you will not see on here is that the Parks and Rec Department also takes care of the grounds for all the schools, which is not, which is, which is not on here, which is huge in terms of acreage for high school, middle school.
We take care of all the lining, the mowing, of all the, actually, all town land, all the town lawns. We take care of all those properties.
Yes, sir.
What, okay, so what does the school do with their tractor that they have at Mountain View and the high school? What does that use for?
They use that as well, they let us use that as well.
So you use their equipment, but it's your manpower doing it?
And when we say manpower, we mean the man. Okay, there is one man. And in fact, you know, it's interesting, because we looked, when we looked at this budget, in fact, you know, a lot of times we talk about heavy equipment things, how can we extend it? One of the most used pieces of equipment they have is the law, is the lawnmower, in fact, instead of replacing, we went forward with a transmission.
To walk behind.
To walk behind, instead of, you know, in other words, looking at these costs, because we feel it's so important to get the supplies we need to revitalize the parks. And when we say supplies, we're not, you know, in other words, and Rick's gonna get into doing Roy, I mean, the barn, and I'll do Roy, and I don't wanna take too much thunder out of it, but I want you to understand that when he says, hey, we need, we're gonna replace the john, isn't that, we're talking the price of the john, the toilet. We're not talking about the labor, we're gonna figure out between, you know, volunteers and Parks and Rec to do these pieces. When we talk about the sidings of these sheds, I mean, the pavilions and stuff, we're talking about the supplies. In other words, we're very conscious of what, how tight the economy is out there, but we're also understanding that if we don't go forward and revitalize these parks, it's gonna cost more down the line, and, you know, obviously, we understand how that works. So I'll give that to Rick, and he's gonna talk about the barn.
I'd like to just say the same thing. Basically, I mean, we have some wonderful assets in this town. You know, the two parks, I mean, twenty-two acres at one park, twelve acres at another park, and then you look at this acreage right here, we have a lot of wonderful natural resources within our community. We have a lot of people that like to use these facilities. And I think we cannot turn a blind eye on, we all own homes, we know we gotta do minor upkeep here and there, just to keep things up to speed. Compound that with a commercial type of industry, where you have a volume of people using these areas, we gotta, we gotta keep that in mind. And I think when you look at what the Commissioners and myself have put together for an original budget, it's a gross appropriated budget. You know, you laugh when you say, porta potties, where's that come out of? You know, I mean, it's not in a budget, I have no idea. You look at office supplies, office supplies, a hundred and fifty dollars is what is budgeted. We all have computers here. What's a cartridge? How many of those do you need in the course of a year? Print cartridge? So going through it and looking at it, you know, it is, yes, it's an increase, and that is, it kinda is what it is. But I think the biggest thing to me, I'll show you some slides here, if we don't take care of this, you're not gonna have it, and it's just gonna go away. And what are we doing for our community? We're not really helping those community people that need that help. We did a survey, we did a survey that in two thousand and nine, and those surveys came back from our residents, saying, there was quotes in there, saying, these bathrooms are disgusting, I don't want my kid to go use the bathroom. So these little things here and there. The other thing is, why I got the podium, I guess. You know, I think, looking at that budget that we developed, the department head's budget, we run a summer playground program. You got eighty kids at one park, and you got sixty kids at another park. You have two staff people per eighty kids, what's that equate to? One to forty ratio. A one to forty ratio is what we have at this present time to supervise those children, eight hours a day. I'll move on to the next slide. Welcome to Barnard Park. First off, show of hands, how many people have been to Barnard Park this year? Excellent. How many people have been to Roy Park this year?
Come on, let's go, Roy Park, come on.
All right, okay, very good, I'm glad. How many people use the pool this year? Excellent. How many use the bathrooms this year?
The last year.
Thank you. Anyhow, I'm glad to see that, glad to see a good turnout, good amount of folks going there. So here we go. We talked about the pool, this is the Barnard Pool. This was taken before we opened the pool, and what you see is, it's a plaster pool on the bottom, and all the plaster is coming up, and how many of you guys swam this year there? You had a show of hands? Did you have little plaster in your toes?
It's in rough shape.
Yeah, okay. What we would do is just take some cement, put that over, year after year after year after year, it's gone beyond that point.
Is it gunite? What is?
It's a gunite, it's a gunite pool, it's a concrete pool with plaster over the top, is what it is.
Have you looked into fiberglass?
No, we really haven't, no.
It's all over California. Is there a permanent solution?
Well, I think, guy, you bring up a great point, because I think the other thing here is, these pools are forty years old. They've treated us very well. I mean, they've been awesome. And that's a good question, you bring up, you know, fiberglass pool, do you put in a whole new pool? I mean.
I owned a business that did, called Aqua Glass, the fiberglass pools all over California. I'd like to sit down with you, take a look at it, make some recommendations, too.
Because I got a quote for our Roy Pool from a gentleman, they call it, put a pool inside of a pool. And just to do that, that's a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, and they'll guarantee it. They will guarantee it, the outcome of it. But anyhow, that's the pool. The diving board, you can see how, if you step on those stairs right there, they're actually gonna break, it's been shut down, the State Department shut it down on us. Those are the lifeguard stands, you cannot use those, the plates are all rusted out, if you step on those, those will break as well. So we don't, for safety reasons, we use white, what do you call those, the two-dollar special chairs there, the plastic chairs, to garden. You actually need a raised chair so that you can see and you have a better vision and all this stuff, so. Our filtration room down at Barnard, we have two, there's six pumps down there, six filters, excuse me, and two commercialized pumps. Dick Coughlin has been an awesome man. We have two, uh, there's six pumps down there, uh, six filters, excuse me, and two commercialized pumps. Dick Coughlin has been an awesome man, band-aiding these for the past five, six years. I don't think you can band-aid them anymore. They're at the point now where they're, they're really starting to leak and they're hurting. This is a toilet that you will see in the pavilion out back, so our eighty campers a day, that's what they're using, they're sitting on that rig. Our Barnard Track, I just wanted to show you this. What it is, is it's just, it's, it's through, um, it's starting to move around, starting to shift, so you're getting cracks in it. You can see on the right, you fill it, every single year you fill it, doesn't matter, comes back, it keeps shifting.
Can, can I just jump in, if you don't mind, for a second?
Sure.
When he's showing you th- this, um, the pool, the pool part, honestly, we, we took the money from uh the, that sidewalk and then to CIP and that's, that's hopefully that's gonna fund to do the repairs to the pools, okay? The second piece, when you see the increase in the budget, that's when we're starting to talk about the um, the lifeguard stands, the, the buildings, et cetera. But we are not looking at this, this repairs to this in this budget, that is that, is that?
Steve brings up a very good point.
We're trying to phase this out, is what I'm saying.
What, if you look at these numbers, I mean, if you looked at what you have.
No, when I say phase out, meaning phase out the repairs, so, so in other words, we're showing you the conditions and we're saying if we don't start doing some of the things now, you, it, you're gonna have a snowball effect, so the, we're showing you and, and saying that, you know, we have these issues here too, but this one, one won't be one of them. I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead, Rick.
That's fine. Steve brings up a good point, when you look at some of the increases to these lines, like the pool operation line, the park operation line, you got ten, eight thousand dollar increase, twelve thousand dollar increase. What, what it is, is it chipping at the stone. You know, we realize that economic times are, are not good. This isn't good either. So we gotta have some kind of process to look at it and chip away at that stone to keep this operational, to keep it up to speed for what our community is looking for. The biggest chunk that you'll see an increase in that pool operation line is like seventy-two hundred, seventy-seven hundred dollars. And that's just the two filter pumps, the two commercialized filter pumps for that one pool. So that's where the lifeguard chairs, you know, it's like three, three grand right there, thirty-five hundred dollars right there is for those chairs. So that's, Steve brought up a very good point. And we're showing you this as in the big picture. We have to kinda look at it and, as I said, chip away at the stone and slowly bring this stuff up to speed. Doesn't have to happen all in one year, absolutely, agreed. But we gotta be sensitive to these assets, these are assets that this town has and we should be darn proud that we have these facilities. Uh, this is our playground. You know, you go to some of the other towns, there's some really nice elaborate playgrounds out there too. This is our playground overhead, Barnard.
Let's see, let your last slide.
Oh.
That's all right, that's fine.
Rest in peace.
So now we're going to Roy Park.
So that was Barnard Park, okay? Steve is gonna talk about Roy Park.
Okay. And Roy Park, I think probably has, the, it's probably the only park I know of that you bring, come to it and you see a headstone. I mean, that, exactly what it's, we're wondering if there's someone underneath that stone, but essentially that's the beginning, it's a Roy Park.
Mr. Roy.
But a, as, as Rick so, so delicately put it, we're just chipping away at the stone. And I think everyone understands that at this point, that this is not a dream budget by any, any stretch of the imagination. And I, everyone's used to seeing this budget just being this flat budget going on. And what's happened is the maintenance and repairs hasn't been done and it's catching up.
You did it again.
And I did it again. Don't touch that button. What did I do the last time to get out of here? There we go. Thank you. All right. Of the two, of the two pools, the one that's in the most disrepair everyone knows is Roy Park. Okay? And part of that is that last year Roy Park was losing seven thousand gallons of water a day, am I correct with that one?
Sixty-six hundred gallons of water a day.
A day. Okay. Mind you, we buy city water when we fill this pool. To give you an, an idea of how fast that drain is, that pool, when, when the season ended and we stopped filling it, drained to nothing in two weeks.
You're losing it through piping or through the?
The pool.
The pool.
Let me ask you this question, if you shut the pumps off, totally off, two weeks later, it's bone dry.
Well, we've definitely gone below the skimmers.
Not losing it through the pipe.
We're not losing it through the pipe, Dave.
And the pipes, I was sarcastic, I'm sorry. The pipes were tet, were redone in two thousand and nine.
Okay.
So the pipes are a good check.
Yeah, I mean, go ahead.
Yeah, um, the water bill, you know, the budget for the water stayed, stays the same in this budget. Yet if you repair the pools, it's gonna use a lot less water.
Last year's water budget wasn't based upon the idea that we would lose seven thousand gallons a day.
No, I understand what you're saying, I mean, that might be adjusted a little bit, but you gotta remember too, is we're watering and irrigating those Saret Fields. And that's, that's a big portion of, that's actually a large portion of the bill too. That would go down a little bit, it would go down a little bit.
But it wasn't, what, last year's budget wasn't based on the premise that we would lose seven thousand gallons of water a day? Okay. All right, we, we won't, and I've been told by Mr. Gross to pick up the pace, so we won't go too far, but you can understand we're talking about the structures here. The other thing is, I wanna just talk a little bit about this pavilion, which is one, one of the other things we uh, we look at heavily, is that we have summer programs at both Barnard and Roy. And how, I think we said we have about a hundred and fifty, is that a hundred and fifty a day?
Yep.
Going through that summer program. And I'm sure most of you already know that we are already talking about, I shouldn't say we are talking, we have, we have a revolving account and we're gonna go forward this next year and there are gonna be fees for our programs in our parks. And part of that is to take that money, put, to assist in the, in the future development of capital improvements within the park and our programs. Okay, and then, and being that it's the first year going into it, we're not quite sure what that amount will be. But without the pools, you can't run those programs. In other words, no one's gonna drop their kid off at a summer program at Roy Park. And you're gonna, I think you're gonna see the picture here, uh, I'll just go here, that's what Roy Park is without the pool. We have a, a metal slide, a hanging ladder, and that swing set holds, I believe, four swings. The highlight of their day is going into that pool. And we think that hopefully, go ahead.
Do you, do you charge to get into the pool?
No. And we, and we can't, okay, 'cause part, originally when those pools were built, federal money was used, so it's open to everyone. But once again, those people in the program, our day program, those are all Goffstown residents. Those, those are us, okay? And so without the pool, the programs don't exist. And we think that somewhere along the line of, between the two parks, just in the day program, it could be anywhere from forty to fifty thousand that we could start getting in revenue, putting into that revolving account, and we can look how we can assist in those capital improvements and programs down the road. And so when we start looking and chipping away at some of these pieces, we realize that somewhere along the line, we had to be creative and the Parks and Rec Commission, I give them credit with that, that we had to sit down and say, hey, we gotta be creative, we gotta look at ways that we can create some revenue. We're gonna have to look at our grants and we're gonna have to partner up with businesses and how we go forward to assist us in this.
Okay, I, I, I'm sorry, but you know for a fact that because of federal funding, that we can't charge that pool? I guess, because here's the thing, there's other communities around us have used federal funding and they're charging, okay? And that goes for Manchester and that goes for Bedford. And I don't know what Bedford's mix of federal funds is, but they're charging and of course, that's a brand new pool, so it's.
Changes our liability.
The point is.
You're not a town resident.
Uh, you know, the, the, the point is that this is a potential revenue source and the federal funds are supposed, the federal obligation is supposed to end when the, when the life of that funding ends. And so if it's forty years old, I don't see where those numbers match.
That's been, I, I'll, I'll, I'll refer to Sue because that's been my understanding, is there anything that we should know?
Well, we just went through this with Glen Lake and they had no objection.
To?
Just charging.
I think you can charge these fees. So I, I, I think you can. I mean, people are doing it, as you just said, other towns are absolutely doing it, you're right.
We're looking for other ways to lighten revenue.
And it's a small charge, but it still could go to improvement.
But I think I have, if I have. Hold on a second. I just, I, I, I know we don't wanna be here till nine o'clock at night, and this is a great point, the thing, so I think if we could just keep going because it's, we'll be here kinda all day. It's a great point in terms of, you know, revenue and making sure that if something is federally funded, can we charge and can we get revenue? It has to do with the whole picture. But this is something that perhaps we can do at another, at another, another time.
And Scott, if I could.
Yep.
That's one of the things that we're gonna want to dive into in detail. So just, just for everyone to know, we were trying to do this to defer not bringing department heads back to the Budget Committee. That's not gonna happen, we're gonna have to probably get department heads back in.
Yeah.
To, to dig more into details, just so that we understand that. So what, what is your time?
Half an hour for this particular presentation.
Okay.
And we're at.
That would be helpful if we started with that, if you let us know how much time you're, you're allotted to each piece.
We did, unfortunately, you hadn't arrived at that time.
No, I had to go back home to get my bifocals.
It's okay. Yeah, this, this one is, I'm trying to stick on the, the schedule for in terms of times.
With that being, we're gonna have to close out because we have four minutes first. But I hope you understand that when you look at this budget, it's just chipping away, are we looking at other avenues? You're absolutely correct, and, and some of your, and that's something to bring forward, we'll take a look at that also.
It's just input, it's not criticism, I, I.
I didn't take it as such. So you know, I'm, I'm saying it's a good idea. My understanding was that there was difference, but that's a, it's good to put in. But these are the things that we are looking at, we're looking to be much more creative within the Parks and Rec, then looking to revitalize these, these parks. And when I say revitalize, they're not, these are not dream parks by any stretch of the imagination. And we're looking to do it in a manner that's consistent with the economic times and what's transpiring. I'm gonna give you one last photo, that's what it looked like thirty or forty years ago.
It fell down, I think it was probably in the early eighties.
I mean, we're, we're fortunate to have, you know, the, the parks and the pools that we have and uh, I think at this point with three minutes left, I've been given the, the red light, I'm gonna pass it on to the clipper, thank you. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Rick, welcome to Goffstown.
Thank you very much.
I, Scott, to, to Chairman Louier's point, I, I know that we're gonna have to have more information because I came here today prepared to see the, the ten percent. And that's one of the options, so the fact that it's not here is a bit of a disservice to where it is we were trying to go when we were looking at all options, so. So I think it goes without saying that between now and when other presentations occur in the weeks ahead at committee, we're gonna need to see the ten percent option.
Well, I, I, I think that in this particular scenario, um, if you wanted us to go over, it was, from what we were presented, it would be shutting down Roy Park?
If we, if I may?
Yeah.
The ten percent, the ten percent reduction with Parks and Recreation basically is um, closing down Roy Pool. So you take away the lifeguard staff that are with that pool. You would then take the playground kids that would go to that park, move them over to Barnard Park. So you'd save another maybe thirty-two hundred, thirty-eight hundred dollars in chemicals. Save a little bit from the water. The other ten percent, part of that is making a full-time staff person a part-time staff person, a twenty-five hour a week person. And bringing that down also brings down your payroll, payroll benefits.
But that, that's based on, on maintain, and I know we don't wanna.
And then that.
This is based on maintaining the current level of services.
Yes.
As you said, you service twenty-two hundred people.
You're gonna service them, but you're gonna work your tail off to service them, yes. I mean, I'm not gonna take away those, I mean, I'll.
So I, I guess, and this is, and I, I'm, I'm fine with that answer now, I know we'll have a chance to do more Q and A in the, in the next meeting and the like. And I would just say that, and this is just in general, Scott.
Yeah.
If, if everybody thinks that like, even considering a ten percent solution and the, and the choices scenario is, well, we'll have to give up X, Y, or Z to, to get to the ten percent based on maintaining the current level of services, that's what, that's not what we're looking for. We're looking for people, the managers, to make true decisions on cutting back things to maintain a ten percent. We don't want that, the choices that say we're gonna make drastic changes just so we can maintain a, a current level of service. And so that's not what I'm looking for.
Yeah, um, we're gonna.
Before you respond, you use the word we a lot.
Me.
Yes.
Me.
I, I gotta make that clear, that the, the, the committee has not made that decision on that, you're looking for that, there may be others on the committee, so that's, that's important to tell.
It's not what I'm looking for.
Pardon my limping around here, so I had, I had a, my leg is still recovering here. But uh, we're gonna, the first budget that you heard was probably the only one in which, um, you know, we looked at it and there was, as you can see from the photographs, there's liability issues, which was not mentioned by, by Rick or Steve. That I know that the board is extremely concerned with in terms of lifeguarding of those pools, people cutting their feet. Those are, those are very, very significant, we must take them seriously. So this one, I think, as you can see, was, was an increase. Whereas others, you will see where, where for the most part are level funded and we'll go over how we arrived at, at some of that. I'm gonna go over the, the town administration budget now. Just trying to, try to give you an overview of, of staffing. In our assessing area, we have two people, town clerk, we have three. Our administrator, in some towns, they have managers, we have three folks there. Building and health, you'll see point five and point five, it's, it's one person, they, that person shares those responsibilities. Information, technology, IT, we have two. Sewer administration assistant, and that gets reimbursed by the sewer commission, that's one. Planning, we have two. For zoning and economic development, that's a shared job, point five each. Finance, three, tax collection, one, building maintenance, point five, for a total of nineteen full-time, not including sewer, and two part-time. Now, here, the town of Bedford did a survey recently and we, we were able to get a copy of their results, just trying to give you some comparisons. If you'll keep in mind that it does not include IT and or welfare. Bedford has a population of twenty-one thousand five hundred, eighteen employees. And as you can see, Merrimack, twenty-six, two, twenty-seven, Laconia, seventeen thousand people, thirty town hall employees, Hampton, and the list goes on and on. As you can see, we, we're pretty conservative in terms of the number of employees that we have at town hall providing services. What you'll also see from the, from those other slides is that you see a lot of these point fives. You see point fives because we're trying to do exactly what you said, Bill, and that is have people share jobs, do multiple roles. This is a history of Goffstown, this is not something that all of a sudden we weren't doing. Over the years, we have taken measures to what good managers do, like you said, is to try to share as best you can and try to have multiple job responsibilities for one individual. Our two thousand and nine admin budget was two million, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight eighty-five. And our actuals were two million, eighty thousand, eight twenty-seven. So admin in two thousand and nine spent ninety-eight percent of their budget. The, there was a ten per, an increase of four percent in the two thousand and ten budget. So now I'm gonna go down to the last two. Now Steve, which one was it, like, this thing? What is the?
The ones before.
Pointer.
On the back.
On the back.
This thing right here?
Yep, that's the laser, yep.
Okay. So the department head came in with a four point nine percent increase and the Board of Selectment is keeping it the same as two thousand and ten. And I'll explain to you the rationale there and what cuts are needed to achieve that. In the town clerk's office, there was a reduction of twenty-six hundred dollars roughly, and that was for printing and binding. That was for the preservation of vital records. Not that the vital records are not worth preserving, but we're going to defer that and try to get by. Finance, we've decreased five thousand dollars for an audit, simply because we do not believe that we need to do this audit. We don't see much benefit in it, the school district is doing something similar. You want, you wanna just, Sue, just explain what, quickly, what that?
Post-employment benefits audit, um, we did one last, this year, but not.
It does not affect our bond rating and it's just one of these things that has been done, but if there's no benefit to us, then why do we wanna spend five thousand on the town side and five thousand on the school side if we don't need to do it? The next is the big area, and that is building inspection, and this is an elimination of a position. We've had somewhat of a decrease in, in building permits and some other things. But we're looking to try to, in order to make this level funded, we have to go down a position. Someone had said before, you just can't keep cutting supply lines, this is a, this is a, an individual, this is a person, uh, this is a, a slot that, that we cannot fill and we're going to regroup, do some more cross-training and have those remaining individuals pick up that work.
Excuse me, Scott.
Yes.
Is that forty-four thousand a loaded number or is that just a salary?
That would be corresponding.
It's FICA, Medicare, workers' comp and wages.
That must've been a part-time.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah. Next is, um, I threw some other ones in here, in elections. Uh, we have fewer elections. That, that number's going down. Uh, revow, I'm not, I'm trying to remember what that one was. Same thing, human services, that's quote-unquote welfare, trying to make some adjustments, uh, to what our, uh, actuals were looking like. As I said, when I started this off, the salary lines reflect one half a year of a two percent increase. So, when you go through these budgets, you'll see that it, that's not level funded. Okay, so when you look at the salary and all the, uh, all those other lines below that, they reflect six months of a two percent increase. Alright? And for those of you who weren't here, uh, the town of Goffstown's year in terms of giving out raises starts on July one. Um, benefit lines have increased, as I said before, to reflect a six percent increase in health insurance. We've included some minor adjustments, uh, for upcoming postage increases. You'll see an increase for, um, revenue renovations. And what we're trying to do is with the fact that we're going to be losing a position here, we're, we're gonna be co- uh, creating a revenue collection office whereby we will have four people with a supervisor in an open area where people can come to a, a window, and multiple people can help them on a multiple, a variety of, of different things. Again, to, uh, to try to-
Scott?
Have more cross-training, yeah.
Will there be bulletproof glass with that?
Uh, I don't believe, like, we haven't looked into that.
It's costly, but, um, Department of Labor likes to see that in town halls now.
It's a seventeen thousand dollars, John, that we have in there, and I do not believe it's going to do that.
Well, I just think it would take our, our quaint town away if we had bulletproof, uh, uh, glass between me and Kathy.
Yeah. Yeah. We, again, uh, similar to what, um, the Parks and Rec Department said, that the seventeen thousand dollars, or a little bit more that we have allocated for that, is, uh, is really something that's more, you know, materials. We have, uh, Dave Robaresch here, who is pretty handy. We're gonna try to have him do, uh, the vast majority of the work. So, we're just trying to do this kind of on the, the cheap, shall we say. But, but get it done so that it's efficient and it's effective for us. You'll see some increased costs for property insurance on buildings, and I'm, and I'm going to assume that that will be for police or any other, um, department.
And liability is in there.
And liability as well. Uh, we have some slight increases in our copiers, uh, that we, that we lease, and a slight increase in IT computer software. Again, what are we doing to lower costs? Revenue collection will centralize our operation for, for greater efficiencies. Again, you know, being the position of reducing a position, we have to be more efficient. The revenue collection will allow us to do that. We are in the process of, uh, bundling our internet and telecommunications with a single vendor, and that's a pilot going on at town hall. And that has potential savings, and don't quote me on it, but Sue, is it around four thousand dollars, three to four thousand a year here?
Forty-two hundred here.
Okay, I'm close. Forty-two hundred dollars here. If it works out well here, we'll, we'll incorporate that to the rest of our, our facilities. Uh, we're cross-training employees on various functions, and as I said to you before, when I had that previous slide, um, I know I do it at work. It's really important when you have very few people that you're a, uh, jack-of-all-trades, shall we say, that you can do multiple things. And at town hall, um, they have been working to cross-train employees. The revenue collection piece will just make that, uh, that much, uh, better. So that when someone is out sick, uh, you know, others can step in very easily. If one particular area is busy, the other one can help, you know, can help out. So, what you'll typically see, say, in the area of, say, tax collection, this time of year, tax collector will be busy. But in those times when it's not as busy, they can help out with the town clerk's office. We're also trying to maximize our offerings on our renovated website. Little thi- it's these little things, again, that you try to be more efficient at. Uh, we have GIS and tax records, and economic development information is on the website. Prior to that, uh, people would come in, and it would be a counter-transaction. They, they want a copy of a tax card. Someone has to go to a drawer or print it out. Uh, there would be a slight transactional cost, which typically wouldn't even cover that, that transaction. Um, and then in terms of a GIS, we give them the basic information for free. If they want anything that is more, um, more detailed, they have to pay for it. But again, it lowers the, the, um, the transactions that are, that occur at a counter. Again, trying to reduce the, you know, the staff count, especially-